Submit the plan to the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development with the inclusion of changes made to the PHA plan as a result of public comments and execute all related documents. You can open the public hearing.
We're going to open the public hearing and start with disclosures.
I had staff, thank you.
Staff.
Staff.
Staff only.
All material has been provided to the council.
Go ahead, Angie.
I'm on. Good evening, Honorable Chairperson and Commissioners. The item before you tonight is the 2018-2019 Public Housing Agency Plan. It is required that the CDC staff prepare this document annually for submission to HUD as a requirement for our grant under the Section 8 Housing Choice voucher program. There has been no significant changes since last year's plan submission, and staff is recommending that the CDC, recommending that the CDC adopt a resolution approving submission of the 2018-2019 Annual PHA Plan to HUD with the inclusion of changes made to the PHA plan as a result of any public comments. And I'd be happy to answer any questions regarding the document.
Thank you.
Great. A quick note, Deputy Mayor Lowery has recused himself from this item. That's why he stepped outside of the dais. This is a public hearing item. Any members of the public who wish to speak on this specific item may come forward this time.
Mayor, council members, Jimmy Not127, Sherri Lane, also the homeowners representative Los Alamos Village, was I am speaking for right now. And that is, is that there has been a question from a few people in my park about Section 8, about the wait list. Has that improved or is that extended? And how does it look from the federal's level on to Section 8 for future people getting on to it? Thank you.
This is a public hearing item. Any other members of the public who wish to speak on this specific item may come forward this time.
We'll close the public hearing. Do you want to respond to that, Angie?
Yes, to respond to the question. The federal budget was passed recently, as most of you know, and we are looking forward to receiving a little more funding during the coming year, during the current year. So we anticipate being able to call some additional people in for the program.
Thank you. Councilmember Sanchez?
Thank you. I, the staff report indicates that HUD invited our housing department to apply for additional 15 Veterans Affairs supportive housing vouchers. In addition, CDC, that's us, was designated as a high performer for fiscal year 2016-2017, which is HUD's highest program rating. And that our new activities include project-based 25 vouchers for homeless families receiving supportive services at North Coast terrorist apartments. And so our priorities, and we're going to prioritize vouchers for homeless individuals and families, veterans, elderly, disabled, and/or where vouchers are difficult to use. So I really commend our staff in working very closely with HUD in ensuring that we continue these very important programs. I am going to move adoption of the resolution.
We have a motion and a second. Please vote.
Motion approved, 4-0. Lowery recues. Item number 18 is approval of the 2015 through 2020 substantial amendment to the consolidated plan, approval of the fiscal year 2018-2019 Community Development Block Grant Program Budget, approval to allocate funding for various housing and community development activities, planning and program administration, and approval to allocate grant funding for various public services and homeless programs.
Open the public hearing. Start with disclosures.
Just staff.
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 Staff only, unless these people are here to talk about CDBG. I remember in years past, we used to have this many people to talk about CDBG. So anyway.
All material has been provided to the council. All material has been provided to the council.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and City Council Members. I'm Cecilia Berandarán, Management Analyst, and I'm here tonight to present regarding our CDBG and home funds that we received from HUD. These funds must be used to help low and moderate income people through providing decent housing, suitable living environment, and expanding economic opportunities. A requirement of the program is that every five years, we develop a new strategic plan that sets forth how we're planning on using those monies, and how it builds with other assets and responding to the community. We adopted our current 2015 to 2020 consolidated plan back in May of 2015 that outlined what we're going to do, and every year we come back to you to present what we're planning on doing with our second allocation or the third allocation. We're coming into our fourth year here. So any changes to our plan must be brought forward to the council and to the community. We are proposing several changes to our con-plan, which is including a new activity called Tenant-Based Rental Assistance that will provide temporary rental assistance to qualified veterans, seniors, and homeless youth. The second change is modification of the existing housing rehab loan program to also assist qualified mobile homeowners with rehab loans. Our CDBG and home budgets were based on the fiscal year current allocations, and the detailed budget was attached to your staff report as Exhibit A. Federal regs require that we do a 30-day public comment period, which begins today. The draft plan will be on, is on the city's website, library, city clerk's office, and in the housing offices. I will be coming back to you on May 8th to formally approve the plan. Staff recommends that the city council approve our plan amendment and our 1819 CDBG budget, approve the allocation of funding for various housing, community development activities, planning, and program administration, and approve the allocation of grant funding for various public services. Thank you, and I'm available to answer any questions.
Thank you.
Great. This is a public hearing item. Any members of the public who wish to speak on this specific item may come forward this time.
Mayor, council members, Jimmy Not127, Sherri Lane, also, I'm the bingo manager over at Alcorazone. I would like to take and advocate for the beneficiary of the results of our bingo. We support the senior nutrition program, and I would encourage you to please keep the support for the senior nutrition program. Over there, the equipment's becoming aging, very aged, and that will be needing to be replaced soon, sooner than later. If you haven't seen it, Sylvie over there, I'm sure, will make time to take you on a tour. So if that can be done, I would appreciate it. Thank you.
This is a public hearing item. Any members of the public who wish to speak on this specific item may come forward this time.
We'll close the public hearing. Councilmember Sanchez?
Thank you. I note in the, in the staff report, it includes a breakdown of how these funds are used. These are funds that we receive based on our numbers in terms of our low-income communities, and we have been getting less funding over the years. But it is 20%, no more than 20% for administrative services to administer these programs, no more than 15% for programs. That's the after-school programs, resource centers, the nutrition program, senior nutrition program, et cetera. And that, we used to have a lot more money than that. And then the balance are capital improvement projects. And basically what we have, the most of that, is payment towards a loan that we took out for Fire Station 7. We took out a loan of $3.5 million. That was about half the cost of Fire Station 7, and we will be done with payment of Fire Station 7 2028-2029. After that time, I don't know if it's going to be around, but then we will have, be able to use those capital improvement monies in, in these neighborhoods. I'm going to go ahead and move, move, what is it, the, approve the amendment.
Councilmember Kern?
I'll second. I just had one quick question. You know, they just passed a $1.2 trillion spending bill last week. The funds for this, were they still included? Because I know there's a lot of things that weren't in there.
I believe that the bill that was passed does incorporate it, but we have not been given any official planning figures for our region. So until we actually have planning figures that have been identified by HUD, we usually tend to use the existing allocation and base that for future. When we come back in May, that would be incorporating, of course, any, if we have official planning numbers from HUD.
We'll have it by May?
We hope.
Yeah, well, okay, we hope. All right, thank you.
We have a motion and a second. Please vote.
Motion approved, 5-0.
Good evening. Next, we're going to move to item number 16. This is the medical cannabis item, and I know a lot of people are here. Thanks so much for taking the time to be here. My name is Zach Beck, City Clerk. I just want to remind you a couple of quick things prior to getting into this item. We have a decorum policy at the city council. Basically, it means that you just treat the council, treat everyone with the same dignity and respect that they'll treat you with. And so on that note, when it comes to your time to speak, you're going to have a green light that's going to go on, means your time has started. Then a yellow light's going to come on, says you have one minute left. And when the red light goes and it has a little bing sound, that means your time is up. So if you could conclude your comments, because we have 54 speakers on this specific item. So in order to be respectful of everyone's time and to get to the actual voting, that's going to be important. Furthermore, as it relates to the decorum policy, part of the decorum also includes like loud clapping and things of that nature. So if you could please refrain from loud clapping or booing or anything to that extent during the course of everyone speaking, that would be very helpful. And if you have any questions, feel free to let me know, but just want to let you guys know some of the groundwork for this particular item, and thank you guys so much. So we'll move forward, item number 16. Item number 16 is a Medical Marijuana Ad Hoc Committee Recommendations. Advisory Group Comments, Staff Recommendations, and Introduction of an Ordinance Amending the Oceanside Comprehensive Zoning Ordinance and Chapter 7, Article 13 of the Oceanside City Code. The purpose of the amendment is to update regulations concerning commercial cannabis uses and allow the establishment and operation of specified commercial medical cannabis facilities only in designated zoning districts east of the coastal zone boundaries, subject to conditions and limitations. The amended text will introduce new land use classifications. Article number four will update commercial, article number 11, industrial, article number 13, and agricultural, article 14, zoning district regulations, and will modify regulated use provisions, article 36. City Code, Chapter 7, Article 13, as proposed to be amended, will set forth the criteria and procedures for permits and licenses necessary to establish and operate commercial medicinal cannabis facilities within the city of Oceanside.
We will open this public hearing and start with disclosures.
I would say just an enormous amount of contact.
Staff, public ad hoc committee meetings, emails, paper letters, books, got it all.
Staff, proponents, opponents, students, and emails and correspondence.
Staff and public?
Public and staff, and I was a member of the ad hoc committee.
All material has been provided to the council.
Good afternoon, or good evening, Honorable Council, Mayor and Council Members. Deanna Larson, Assistant City Manager, presenting to you tonight the review of the Medical Marijuana Ad Hoc Committee Recommendations. So we'll be, I'll be providing a little bit of background to start with, providing an overview of the ad hoc committee recommendations and staff's response, as well as staff's recommendation. And in terms of staff, I'm referring to a team that consisted of the city manager's office, city attorney's office, development services department, fire department, and police department. A collective review was conducted. So by way of background, in 1996, California voters approved Prop 215, the Compassionate Use Act of 1996, which legalized the use of medical marijuana within the state of California. Then in 2015, the California Legislature enacted the Medical Marijuana Regulatory and Safety Act, which established a licensing and regulatory framework for the commercial cultivation, manufacturing, transportation, distribution, and sale of medical cannabis. Those regulations went into effect on January 1st of 2016. Then in November of 2016, California voters approved Prop 64, which is the Adult Use of Marijuana Act. That established a licensing and regulatory framework for commercial cultivation, manufacturing, distribution, and sale of cannabis for those age 21 and older, not limited to medical patients as Prop 215 did. And that was approved by 56.9% of Oceanside voters in November of 2016. The state has been developing a licensing framework, and they've identified 36 license types, 18 of which are for medical marijuana, and they began issuing temporary licenses on January 1st of this year. They are working on their permanent regulations and will be issuing permanent licenses later this year. The state's requirements are minimum requirements. Local jurisdictions can adopt more stringent standards, or they can prohibit medical marijuana and adult use of marijuana activities with limited exceptions. So on April 19th of last year, the city council voted with a vote of 3-2 to designate an ad hoc committee to look into medical marijuana. The ad hoc committee was chaired by Deputy Mayor Chuck Lowery and Councilmember Jerry Kern, and they held public meetings, toured cannabis production facilities, and met with industry experts over a series of months, resulting in recommendations that were presented to the city council on December 20th of 2017. At that meeting, the city council referred the recommendations to staff and appropriate advisory boards and commissions by a vote of 3 to 1. So first, the types of uses that the ad hoc committee recommended. Medical marijuana cultivation, manufacturing, distribution, medical cannabis dispensaries, medical marijuana testing laboratories, medical marijuana nurseries, and also included a recommendation for local license and employee permit requirements. And those uses designated on the screen with an asterisk are recommended as regulated uses under the city's ordinances. And so a regulated use is defined in Articles 36 of the zoning code. It identifies special separation requirements for uses designated as regulated uses. Its purpose is to separate certain adult-oriented land uses from each other and from residential neighborhoods, family-oriented uses, or sites commonly used by minors. The regulated use requirement is 1,000 feet, and that would apply to medical cannabis cultivation, manufacturing, distribution, and dispensaries as recommended by the ad hoc committee. Staff further recommends that the separation requirements also apply to other youth-oriented uses and medical cannabis facilities, and that medical cannabis facilities be excluded from the waiver of regulated use locational requirements, which is currently contained in the code. The first use that was recommended by the ad hoc committee was cultivation. That is a facility where medical cannabis is propagated, planted, grown, harvested, dried, cured, tagged for tracking, or trimmed, or any combination thereof. The ad hoc committee recommended that that be allowed in the agricultural zone as a regulated use, subject to a conditional use permit and an agricultural activity permit. Staff agrees cultivation is an agricultural type of use. However, we also recommend that there be a maximum of 122,000 square foot structure per legal lot and a 10% lot coverage maximum. Furthermore, staff is recommending that an agricultural activity permit not be required since all of the items that would be reviewed under that permit would be covered through the conditional use permit process. Manufacturing is the production, preparation, propagation, and compounding of medical cannabis and medical cannabis products without the use of a volatile solvent. It includes extracting, infusion, preparation of edibles, and the packaging and labeling of products, but it excludes cultivation. The ad hoc committee recommended that it be permitted in the industrial limited and industrial general zones as a regulated use, subject to a conditional use permit. And staff does agree with that classification as those activities are typical manufacturing activities in industrial zones. Distribution is a location where medical cannabis and products are obtained from a licensed medical cannabis cultivator or manufacturer, and it's temporarily stored prior to delivery to a medical marijuana dispensary. The ad hoc committee recommended that it be permitted industrial limited and industrial general zones as a regulated use, subject to a conditional use permit. And staff does agree with that classification as distribution is a typical activity that is conducted in industrial zones. A medical cannabis dispensary is the retail operation where medical marijuana and medical marijuana products are offered for retail sale, including deliveries. The ad hoc committee recommended that it be permitted in the community commercial, special commercial, highway-oriented, industrial limited, and industrial general zones, subject to a conditional use permit as a regulated use. Furthermore, medical marijuana dispensaries would be limited to one per 40,000 residents. Staff does note that medical marijuana dispensaries are the only public-facing medical marijuana business. The other business types are all commercial, either wholesale or business-to-business type operations. And staff is suggesting that city council consider starting with a maximum of two dispensaries and evaluate their performance over a period of time of 12 months before proceeding to licensed additional dispensaries. A testing laboratory is an independently accredited and state-licensed facility that offers or performs tests of medical cannabis and medical cannabis products. The ad hoc committee recommended that it be permitted in the community commercial, general commercial, special commercial, highway-oriented zones, subject to an administrative conditional use permit, and that it would not be a regulated use. Staff, however, recommends that medical marijuana testing labs be restricted to the industrial limited and industrial general zones, subject to an administrative conditional use permit. That's because the laboratory activity is consistent with industrial use and is not a commercial use that would be open to the public, which would be typical of commercial zones. A nursery is a facility that produces only clones, immature plants, seeds, or other agricultural products specifically for the propagation and cultivation of medical cannabis. The ad hoc committee recommended that it be permitted in the agricultural zone with an administrative conditional use permit. Furthermore, they recommended that medical marijuana nurseries up to 1,000 square feet be allowed in the community commercial, general commercial, special commercial, highway-oriented, and industrial limited, industrial general zones with an administrative CUP, and that it not be considered a regulated use. However, staff recommends that medical cannabis nurseries be classified as a regulated use and be limited to the agricultural zone with the same requirements that apply to cultivation. And that's because staff's review of these activities are typical agricultural activities under our zoning code. The local license is a requirement in addition to the conditional use permit or administrative conditional use permit. It would be issued by the city manager or designee and would have a number of requirements. That would include a written background check by the Oceanside Police Department, including a criminal background check of all operators and employees, documentation of possession of the privacies, that could be in the form of a lease or a deed, an operating plan, including floor plan, employee lists, third-party tracking software, security plan, video surveillance, alarm system, designated signage, lighting, commercial-grade locks, and onsite security 24/7. Furthermore, they would need to provide indemnification, insurance, an agreement to defend the city, and assumption of all liability. Staff further recommends the addition of a standard to deny issuance or revoke a local license if it would impair the health, safety, or welfare of the public, cause negative impacts to property values, cause odor to impact adjacent properties, or impair the city's ability to prevent crime or keep cannabis away from minors or other illicit markets. This is a standard that was contained within the employee permit requirement and was omitted by oversight from the local license requirement. Additionally, all employees working in medical cannabis businesses would need to obtain an employee permit. They would need to be age 21 and older, and that would require a criminal background check, fingerprints, no conviction within the preceding 10 years for possession of a controlled substance for sale, sale of a controlled substance, a violent crime, or a strike crime. Furthermore, staff recommends that signage for all marijuana, medical marijuana businesses be limited to the business name and address, with no logos, advertising, banners, green crosses, or similar insignia. Staff further recommends that an annual report be submitted to the city council reporting on all medical marijuana business activity in Oceanside. Terms of fiscal impact, medical marijuana businesses will generate minimal revenue for the city of Oceanside. They would be subject to the existing business license, property tax, and sales tax if they are not selling to medical marijuana patients in possession of the state-issued card. Taxes would not apply unless they receive voter approval, and regulatory fees would be assessed to the extent that they offset actual costs to the city. Staff recommends that the regulatory fees be created for all medical marijuana businesses prior to accepting applications for any type of medical marijuana business, and staff further recommends that a taxing framework be developed for marijuana businesses and presented for voter approval in the November 2020 city elections. Staff feels like that will give sufficient time to analyze and come up with an appropriate taxing framework. In looking at taxes in other jurisdictions, most taxes, most jurisdictions assess a 5% to 15% gross receipts tax, or for cultivation, a per-square-foot cultivation tax. And staff needs to analyze what the appropriate, appropriate levels would be for the city of Oceanside. Would note that both the police chief and the fire chief have specific concerns about the impacts of medical marijuana businesses. They both submitted memos, which are contained in your staff report, and in summary, concerns about increased crime, increased loitering, panhandling, homelessness, and other types of activities associated with dispensaries, increased incidence of driving under the influence and traffic accidents related to marijuana DUIs. Fire chief is also concerned about increased marijuana-related medical calls and ambulance transports, vehicle accidents caused by impairment, exposure to smoke and residue if a fire occurs at a cannabis facility, as well as lifeguards enforcing medical marijuana smoking on the public beach, which would not be allowed, and they would be in the role of advising people that they needed to cease that activity. So the staff has presented essentially the same report to three of the city's commissions. The Police and Fire Commission received the report at their February 20th, 2018 meeting, and at that meeting, they unanimously recommended to not send the ad hoc recommendations to city council. On March 1st, 2018, the Economic Development Commission received the staff report and recommendations, and they provided feedback that the city council should zealously guard the city's image and reputation, take a measured approach, including thoughtful research on the impacts in other jurisdictions, and develop and deploy a taxing structure prior to issuing any permits. The Planning Commission reviewed the recommendations at their March 12th, 2018 meeting. They unanimously recommended that the city council approve amendments to set forth regulations for the establishment and operation of medical cannabis facilities as presented in your staff report. They further provided feedback that the city council should consider increasing the number of dispensaries to one per 20,000 population, that they increase the cultivation lot coverage percentage to 20% of the lot area, and that waivers of the locational requirements be allowed. So with that, staff recommends that the city council review the Medical Marijuana Ad Hoc Committee Recommendations, the city advisory group comments, and staff's recommendations, and then introduce an ordinance amending the Oceanside Comprehensive Zoning Ordinance and Chapter 7, Article 8 of the Oceanside City Code, as detailed in the staff report. And the staff team is here to answer any questions that you may have.
At this time, we'll move forward to public comment. We're going to call forward a time. We have 59 speakers now on this particular item, so the way it's going to go is, we have two podiums. So if you could please line up at both podiums, two per podium, and then begin speaking. And if there's any way to expedite your comments, obviously that would be ideal in reference to everyone's time, but obviously we want to hear from the public. So with that being said, I'll start with our first four speakers. First speaker is Dan Casino, followed by Jimmy Raymond, followed by Kevin Johnston, and Josh Tenlove.
And as you're making your way to the podium, I would ask that as the speakers conclude, that you please hold your applause so that we can keep things moving. So thank you very much for that.
Yeah, and you have two minutes to speak on each item. And if you could just please, two minutes per item, and if you could just state your name before you speak, that'd be great. Thank you so much.
Counsel, Mayor. My name is Joshua Tenlove. I'm a resident here in Oceanside and a homeowner. I live at 8 Kern Court with my wife and three boys, ages 8, 5, and 1, all 10 school here in Oceanside. I'm a second-generation nonprofit operator called Operation Second Choice, and for the past 25 years, we've been serving veterans, specifically disabled combat veterans, working pretty closely with the VA, providing low-income housing and job training and revocation. When the state and almost 60% of Oceanside voters chose to vote for recreational cannabis this past year, a plethora of opportunities have presented themselves to veterans. Many of these opportunities are much more complex than just cultivation and distribution. Our local economy can evolve and open doors for opportunities in agritourism, culinary arts, regulation, security, equipment manufacturing, et cetera. The legalization of cannabis has opened a floodgate for new Our local economy can evolve and open doors for opportunities in agritourism, culinary arts, regulation, security, equipment manufacturing, et cetera. The legalization of cannabis has opened a floodgate for new job opportunities and local business owners. Commercial and agricultural property values can rise with the plethora of supporting hybrid industries. The Bureau of Cannabis Control has granted veterans front-of-the-line privileges for state licensing applications, referring to the Business Profession Code, Section 11, 115.4. An applicant who has served as an active-duty member of the Armed Forces of the United States and was honorably discharged can provide evidence of such honorable discharge shall have his or her application expedited. If one of our veterans that we assist with starting businesses were to walk across the street over to the city planning and inquire about a local permit to obtain, to operate a cannabis business here in Oceanside, there will be required a license from a brick-and-mortar in another city or county. If you get on this app called We Maps, there's about over 60 cannabis companies actively operating in Oceanside. As we speak, only one of those companies are permitted, is a multimillion-dollar company based in Santa Ana. These facts are a direct result of our city not offering a local permit application process, and what we've created is a community that has a great demand for natural medicine that cannot be obtained lawfully or conveniently. As a resident of Oceanside and an advocate for veterans, I want to see our city prosper and set a golden standard for locally-regulated tax and licensed cannabis business.
Thank you, Mr. Tenlove.
Let's put the tax on this ballot and put that money towards our children's schools, law enforcement, and our veterans. Thank you.
Thank you.
Sorry, Tom. How are you doing, Counsel? My name is Jimmy Raymond. I believe I've met with a couple of you over the last few weeks. I've been following this initiative for quite a while. I've been at quite a few of these hearings. I just wanted to come up and reiterate what I've said in the past. I'm a legal medical marijuana business owner in another city. I've been a resident here for 25 years. I previously owned liquor stores and everything else in this city and have never had any problems. I truly believe that, I'm not saying that maybe I'm going to be the next guy that has a medical marijuana dispensary here, but I believe that it can be done responsibly, and I believe that the city deserves the income and the jobs that it can generate. So I don't want to take up too much of the time. I've already spoken before this council several times. I just want to thank everybody for all their hard work. That was an extremely, extremely educated and detailed report, and I've read every single page that this ad hoc committee has put together. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Michael Martinez. I'm Oceanside resident. I'm also a disabled combat. I've done two tours in Alhambra Province. I came home, wanted to start a business, thought I would do it. I did everything I needed to do for the state of California, and I am the golden standard. I came to the city of Oceanside here. I've been here for a while, but I came to get my local license. I was pretty much told, as a local person that has not owned a business or brick-and-mortar in another city, I cannot do that. So basically, I'm asking for you guys to kind of make some amendments or change something to give us local guys and express those veterans that are trying to create pathways for other veterans to get in this industry and flourish. So if you could, please, just take that into account, and thank you very much for your time. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Hi, my name's Kevin Johnston from Ocean Breeze Therapies, and we're a holistic healing company. And I want to thank you all for the effort that you're putting in for these votes and for your proposals that we're just devouring every detail to do it the right way. And there was one thing that I just wanted to stress, that no one has ever died from a pot overdose, and that's a big issue that seems to be avoided. We're so crazy to do things right and to crack down on this incredible problem, but it's not a problem. People need this medicine. So many people die every day because of alcohol, and cannabis is not the problem. It provides so much benefit for so many people, and we really appreciate your help to do this the right way. Thank you.
Is Dan Casino here? Casino? Okay, no problem. All right, we're going to move on to our next four speakers. Jeff Taylor, Terry, I apologize, Terry Pollyra?
Hello.
Okay, thank you, yeah, Terry. And then Joel Weisberger, and Noel Bligan? I'm so sorry if I mispronounced anything.
Thank you, Counsel, for taking the time to go over this. I've spoken with most of you many times over the last year, so... Okay, so this graph was published by the Substance Abuse and Mental Health Services Administration, which is an agency of the U.S. Department of Public Health and Human Services. This is their National Survey on Drug Use and Health. It was published in 2015. It's a comprehensive survey of substance abuse among a nationally representative sample of 67,500 Americans ages 12 and older. You can see teen cannabis use pretty much remains stagnant throughout the years, even with legalization. Quote, "These findings offer hope that marijuana and heroin use may be slowing down," said Sam Sa, the principal deputy administrator, Kana Inamoto, in a statement, "and more American youth are rejecting alcohol and tobacco." The state-level data from the National Survey on Drug Use and Health, which is sponsored by the Department of Public Health and Human Services, showed that 18.35% of Coloradans ages 12 to 17 had used marijuana in the past year in 2014 and 2015, which is down sharply from 20.81% in 2013, 2014. This data is from and sponsored by the U.S. government. This is not a survey from a special interest group that advocates against or for cannabis. If a local government dismisses data published by the government, then what is the point of any of this? Yes, statistics can be skewed. That's why there are entire degrees and programs dedicated to statistics and research methods in order to produce valid data. Surely, U.S. employees of the government have faith in their research. This is not some amateur running frequencies on SPSS. This is from the government. Prohibitionists will argue that voters weren't aware that Prop 64 would allow commercial cannabis businesses. It said commercial cannabis rate there on the ballot. Are we really going to insinuate that voters don't know how to read? Furthermore, if we're really going to make society entirely child-friendly, like prohibitionists often argue, as I'm sure you're all well aware, we better get rid of all the breweries, bars, liquor stores, casinos, strip clubs, bikinis, massage parlors, et cetera, that are all within about a mile of this building. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Terry Polly. I'm a registered nurse. I've been a nurse 40 years, and I'm a cannabis nurse advocate. I see patients in their homes. I help them navigate the cannabis system, and I wanted to speak today because it's very personal for me. My mother had cancer 43 years ago. She passed away. She was treated at the Mayo Clinic in Rochester, Minnesota. At that time, when she was struggling with her treatment, her doctor suggested that she smoked pot. She didn't, because she's a good Christian. She didn't believe in doing something that was against the law, but this was 43 years ago, and he thought that that would help her get through her treatment, and she passed away. So when I had the opportunity to work as a nurse navigator with cannabis, I jumped at the chance. Currently, my clients, the average age is 75. These are people who are not getting high, who are not robbing or raping people. They're just taking this medicine because they don't want to take narcotics. Narcotics make them constipated. They make them sick to their stomach. They make them so they can't get out of bed. So it's very important for them to have some relief of their symptoms and be able to go on with their daily life. So no matter what your personal beliefs are about cannabis, you have the opportunity to make changes to provide safe medical marijuana for patients, so they don't have to buy it on the black market, and they don't have to die from abusing some other drug. So I thank you for the opportunity to speak, and I hope you really think about the opportunity you have to make a safe decision for patients. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Joel Weisberger. I am the chairman of the San Diego County Farm Bureau's Cannabis Working Group. Over the last year, I've been working with the Oceanside City Ad hoc Committee on behalf of the farmers in the Morro Hills area. It is my belief that the ad hoc committee has taken great lengths to ensure, great lengths to ensure that the recommendations put before you tonight will work for the city and residents of Oceanside. That being said, in the last few weeks, there have been some changes that have been made that would be a hindrance to local farmers. Those changes are the 1,000-foot setback, the 10% lot usage, and the one license per parcel. These new requirements will limit many farmers from participating in the cultivation of cannabis, as it will create a first-come, first-served situation, as well as limiting landowners' ability to lease land. Thank you.
Thank you, and good evening, Counsel, for the opportunity to speak. My name is Noel Breen, and I come only to address the issue of medical marijuana. In my plea to the Counsel, to please consider doing something to immediately relieve the suffering of a lot of people who could benefit from the drug. This is a deep, personal issue with me. 40 years ago, believe it or not, this evening, I and a bunch of other young people, I was president of the New Mexico Organization for the Reform of Marijuana Law Chapter, were talking to the state legislators all over the New Mexico State Capitol, pleading to them to please pass the Lynn Pearson Act of 1979, even though we didn't mind some of the side benefits of marijuana use. Our purpose was to alleviate the suffering of a kid that was 21 years old who was dying of testicular cancer. We wanted to keep our friend along around us a little bit longer. I come from a family that has been tortured by drug and alcohol abuse. I am the only male in my generation that hasn't had issues with it through the grace of whatever. So when I go over and sit here and speak in advocacy of marijuana is because I believe that it has definite purpose in harm reduction in this society, along with the medical marijuana benefits. Right now, at the moment, if you all noticed, I have an athletic injury. Why should I have to go over and, and it's painful, why should I have to consider taking an opiate to relieve my pain rather than going to a dispensary in a safe neighborhood and getting marijuana that would do the job better, cheaper, and run me into the thing of addiction? Again, folks, I've seen it in my own life. I could talk hours to argue all about it. I won't bother. Thank you for the chance to talk.
Thank you. Our next four speakers are Gloria Ryan, followed by Kristin Johnson, Ken Sobel, and Bill Fowler.
Hi, I'm Gloria Ryan, 92054. I had the honor of being a part of the ad hoc committee, patient advocate. And as a patient, I've watched over the past 21 years, a lot happen in our industry and a lot happen politically on both sides. When I was going through cancer, which I'm a 10-year ovarian cancer survivor, I was part of an illegal state, which was very hard to find medication. My oncologist recommended and told me that was the only thing that was going to help me survive, the type of cells and chemo that I was enduring, as well as keeping my body safe. I've also used it for bipolar and anxiety after two doctors prescribing, mis-prescribing, and finding myself in the hospital because of the mania that the prescription drugs caused. So that's my choice to use. But I do want to also remind everyone that we've seen what doesn't work in cities, and we see what does. We have a city, Santa Ana, that has a very successful program. They provided safe access, as well as professional businesspeople, and attracted, as we worked very hard to attract throughout our city. Oceanside has a lot of opportunity here, but we need to put our patients first. We voted for it, our voice, our city, so please consider it. And together, we need to remember, city, police department, fire department, engage, let's educate and create even a better program of what Santa Ana has created. Thank you very much for your time. Thank you very much for your effort, and as a patient, from the bottom of my heart, please consider this. We need this. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Kristin Johnson from Oceanside. I'm a patient. I take it for my psoriatic arthritis because it reduces the inflammation, and I don't have to take the heavy-duty biological shots that my rheumatologist advised me to do. I don't want to take them because they lower your immune system, and you can have lymphoma, liver failure, all kinds of other things. I love our police department, and so I really hate to go against what they think. But from my view, people are getting the marijuana illegally, right over in Vista or delivery at their houses, so the marijuana is still here. I'd like it to be taxed, and money, if it costs the police department more, given to the police department. And my main priority is for the farmers. Even if we don't get dispensaries, I would like them to be able to grow it, and they can sell it to Vista or other cities, and that will give them the cash crop which they desperately need now. Thank you.
Counsel members, my name is Bill Fowler. I'm president of the Democratic Club of Carlsbad and Oceanside. Tonight, I'm speaking only for myself. I admire the nonpartisan efforts of councilpeople Kern and Lowry for putting their community first to implement sensible and conservative local control for production, processing, and patient access to cannabis. This is a model I hope other city councils in North San Diego County use to take a local control of the regulation of cannabis. The right of adults to make decisions about their health care should not be a partisan issue. Thoughts and prayers, we've found out, do not always save children, and neither do mainstream medical treatments. We should have the right to alternative modes of medical treatment where there is substantial evidence of effectiveness. Cannabis use is now legal in all of California, of course, and it has been legal for medical marijuana for more than 20 years. It is time we stop pretending we can make cannabis use illegal or keep adults from choosing cannabis to address medical issues simply because they live in any particular city. Oceanside can become a model for sensible local regulation of cannabis. Oceanside is a council vote away from showing other cities how to do this. Please vote yes.
Good evening, Mayor and Counsel. My name is Ken Sobel. I've lived in San Diego for 40 years, and I've been involved as a cannabis advocate for some time. Four years ago, I tried a four-and-a-half-day evidentiary trial in the state of Arizona where we sued the Department of Public Health on behalf of the U.S. veteran community, and we proved that cannabis is not only safe and effective, but easily the safest and most effective treatment for post-traumatic stress disorder. Since then, 11 states adopted that standard. I appear on behalf of those brave warriors who've served our country so valiantly. I also appear on behalf of the Cannabis Nurses Association. These are dedicated professional nurses who understand the knowledge and wisdom behind the plant and use it to treat literally hundreds of diseases that afflict not only members of our community who are adults, but as we know, in 16 states in the United States, the only patients who can legally use cannabis as a medicine are children. I also recognize law enforcement. Four years ago, I set up two dispensary activities in Morana, Arizona. They had the same concerns from law enforcement at the time. They didn't have a 500-page California SEQA report that showed that it was low-impact, but they did express those concerns. If you call those folks today, they'll tell you that they don't even know that those dispensaries are there. That's how well they blend in, they pay their taxes. But I appear on behalf of some of the local legacy growers here, and I have provided a letter to each of you that has been handed out and also sent by email, and there are a couple of changes they request. There's a 1,000-foot separation internally that needs to be addressed, because it's obviously much better to consolidate these activities there. And lastly, I gave you some information about a type N license for a local manufacturer who makes pharmaceutical products and would like to incorporate cannabis as part of his transdermal path. So I encourage you to read that letter, and I support the Planning Commission's recommendations on the medical marijuana ordinance, and thank you very much.
Our next four speakers are Doug Applegate, Michelle McKechnie, Barbara Gordon, and John Byram.
Good afternoon, Honorable Mayor and Council Members. I'm Doug Applegate. I now live in 92057, back in Oceanside again after many years. What I want to do is commend the ad hoc committee on a bipartisan effort that puts country ahead of party in politics, and I want to speak to what I've dealt with as a Marine since 1979. And I'm going to speak to what I've dealt with as a Marine since 1974, a trial attorney in both the state and federal justice system in five states. I think that one of the things that has been overlooked in the good deeds that Oceanside is about to, to take on, is the 800-pound gorilla in the room, and that's the federal government. What I want to offer is, we need the federal government to authorize research in the efficacy of the use of medical cannabis and marijuana, that it be regulated on a federal scale as well, and that, of course, it be taxed as a revenue source. And that's what I intend to do when I go to Congress after I'm elected in November of this year. But thank you all for your efforts here in, on this ordinance and regulations, and I ask for a yes vote for everyone. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Hi, ladies and gentlemen, city council members, commissioners, audience, my name is Michelle McKechnie, I am the cooperator of 420 Central Delivery here in Oceanside. We are the only licensed delivery here in Oceanside, and I come before you to beg you to please say yes to these ordinances for a number of different reasons. First off, ladies and gentlemen, this industry has been in the dark for way too long. It is time for us to start taking it seriously, and to start giving the people the medicine that they need. We've heard people talk about the different additives that have been found in products that they're taking for medicine. Those of us that are in this licensed business work hard to make sure that doesn't happen, and we want you to vote for it, so that it can't happen. The state has set up a beautiful system of regulation for testing, to make sure that everything that comes into a store, comes from a cultivator, comes from a manufacturer, is 100% organic. There's hardly any other industry that can say that, that they have that much success rate. Also, ladies and gentlemen, I've mentioned it before, what a great opportunity for Oceanside, to be able to bring jobs to Oceanside, bring a larger tax base to Oceanside, be able to do it in a good manner. We know that there's black market, we know that there are illegal sales going on, and the way that we stop that is by working together. We all come together, city council members, policemen, firemen, dispensary owners, whoever it might be, who have public safety concerns, and we work together to come up with a system that works for everybody. Because again, ladies and gentlemen, pretending that it's not here, and pretending that we don't need these regulations, or that we can pass on them, you're going, doing a disservice to the citizens of Oceanside who need this medicine. There are probably hundreds so in here, and there's probably thousands, if not tens of thousands, in the city of Oceanside that are begging you from their home to pass these regulations. So please, open your heart, do what is right, and provide medical cannabis to the city of Oceanside. Thank you.
Hi, thank you for letting me speak, Barbara Gordon. I hope the city will have the wisdom and the interest of the residents, and especially our kids, to not cave to the money of big marijuana and their interests, which can speak louder than the welfare of the city. Unfortunately, the normalization of this drug has evolved into a full-scale marijuana cultivation. You hired a police chief to protect your city, but then you do not listen to Chief McCoy's concerns regarding the many marijuana businesses that his office will have to deal with. There are problems with crime and gangs in Oceanside that law enforcement is responsible for handling. The cost of public safety is increasing every year, so why would you allow more problematic businesses with their all-cash, pugnet marijuana smell, large amounts of water use, robbery, armed guards, it goes on and on. Not only will law enforcement be impacted by this industry, but the business surrounding the marijuana establishments will suffer. With the problems, other businesses will not want to locate next to them, and it will lower property values. Decisions you make impact the citizens of Oceanside. The city must put public health and safety above the smoke and mirrors of the big marijuana business. The, the prohibition of marijuana businesses, whether it's dispensaries, cultivation, manufacturing, is good for public health, good for local economy, and good for public safety. Thank you.
Good evening, mayor and council. My name's John Byram, and I'm with North Coastal Prevention Coalition, and a resident of Oceanside. Our president, Craig Balbin, was unable to be here tonight, but I wanted to share some of the points he made in an opinion piece published in the Coast News on Friday. Prop 64 was not a mandate by the voters to commercialize pot. It explicitly allows local jurisdictions to make their own rules, including prohibiting marijuana activities. As much as 80% of the state continues to ban commercial marijuana, just this past January, the residents of Compton, California, which supported Prop 64, rejected two local initiatives to allow pot sales, with 75% voting no. In North County, the cities of Carlsbad, Escondido, Poway, San Marcos, have stated unequivocally they have no interest in commercial marijuana. Mayor Voss of, of Poway said, "There's no amount of money that would make me vote to support commercial sale of marijuana in Poway, period." One of NCPC's biggest concern with allowing big marijuana foothold in Oceanside is advertising, promotion of marijuana that will inevitably lead to normalization of marijuana use. It has also been a concern of the staff of the Subsuse Counseling Center in Camp Pendleton. Oceanside has been working for over 40 years to clean up its image. I hope our city council recognizes that the bright future of Oceanside will be found in North County leaders saying no to marijuana commercialization. I also have just a few of hundreds of postcards that said, "Don't do this," so.
Our next four speakers are Dave Newman, Mike Milano, Robin Lynn, and Diane Rapp.
Thank you, all right. Dave Newman, Fire Mountain. In 2017, Amber and I shelved our voter initiative in lieu of working with the city while it creates its own ordinance. Unfortunately, we are concerned with the direction the Ad Hoc and city staff have taken with its recommendations. We feel allowing for only two dispensaries is just feeding into the reefer madness we have fought so hard to overcome. Who are we protecting exactly? The city's children, or the city's reputation? Our own planning commission recommended up to eight dispensaries in the city. And why? Because it's not 1930, and common sense was allowed to enter the room. The lack of indoor cultivation is practically unheard of in the cannabis industry. Nevada's legal market is completely indoor cultivation, no outdoor allowed. Indoor cultivation is clean, pest-free, mold-free, secure, and provides a quality product, to where currently, Oceanside farms account for the most pesticide-contaminated soil in all of San Diego County. And the city feels Oceanside needs to take the lead on this? Nurseries, being regulated to ag-zone-only, Evergreen Nursery, Home Depot, Lowe's, all cultivate and sell plants, and that's all cannabis, that's all a cannabis plant is in the vegetative state. It's just a plant, a plant that produces no resin, hence no THC. Just a plant that is actually less dangerous than a spiny cactus or common fire-stick succulent found in any nursery, but you're not forcing them into specific zoning. It's a double standard and a regulation based on either misinformation, or sheer need to throw roadblocks at an industry, and meant only to be a hindrance. To pretend to bring legalization to the patients of Oceanside while at the same time writing regulations that resemble nothing short of a chokehold on the industry will only serve the black market well, will drive up the cost of property, and create a feeding frenzy in the city that will take its toll on the patient's bottom line. Lastly, we urge the city to do the right thing and consider locals first when approving applications. Thank you.
Thank you for this opportunity to talk. I'm Diane Rapp, and I'm here as a retired teacher who continues to substitute in this North County area, and just want you to realize that teachers are trying to help understand, try to understand how you might not support them, and how important your reputation of a city, how hard it is to, to improve it, which it has, and how quickly it can be done. Here in North County, the cities of Carlsbad, San Marcos, Escondido, Encinitas, Poway, Solana Beach, and Del Mar do not feel the need to bring commercial pot business into their city, so why do we? Your law enforcement and your fire department don't want it. Commercial pot sales and businesses like cultivation and manufacturing are not low-profile ventures, and they will affect the way the media sees this city, and really confuse our youth. Since the city already allows for deliveries to patients who need it, the only people served by these new proposed pot ventures are pot profiteers. Our schools are trying to raise self-reliant, respectful, and responsible students, and they need the city to be partners with them. I would respectfully suggest that you have a report from your school districts regarding marijuana use by teens and the effects it's having in their classroom. I was impressed by the Vista School District, who educates many of our Oceanside youth, and sent a bulletin in December to parents regarding the role that the use of marijuana and Xanax was having in undermining the educational goals of the district, asking for parents for help. It's hard for parents to teach no when our city is saying yes, it's okay. As a...
Good evening, Mike Milano, 442 Ernest Court, Oceanside. A U.S. Army veteran, former infantry officer, father of teens and a five-year-old. Please allow us, as farmers in the city, to, to grow this crop. Long-term agriculture family, and we're looking for new opportunities in the city. Some of those setbacks that have already been discussed, I won't go over, but they're a little problematic. That'll actually prohibit many small landowners from actually being able to farm, where we have the land where we can accommodate those setbacks, but most don't, so we don't really feel that's fair, but other people have spoke on that. So anyways, thank you guys for all the work, staff as well. I know behind the scenes, you guys have been doing a ton of work on this issue, so thank you very much.
Hi, my name is Robin Lynn, I have a business at 3041 Industry Street, here in Oceanside. I'm a cannabis educator. I help people navigate the world of cannabis here in Oceanside, as well as across the nation. I'm here tonight on behalf of thousands of adults in the North County region who desire and deserve professional and safe access, without having to travel hours away, or deal with shady, back-alley dillars to obtain it. For nearly a year, cannabis has been a topic in this chamber. We've heard the good, the bad, the ugly, we've been inspired, we've been shocked, we've heard all the statistics from both sides. The reality is this, it's here, it's legal, and professional businesses are emerging from the shadows. Unlike Prop 215, the state is embracing regulation, oversight, and accountability at all levels. Is it perfect yet? No. Will it get there? Yes. Especially with progressive and thoughtful approaches, such as the city of Oceanside is proposing. The Ad Hoc Committee, the staff, have worked diligently, learning, observing, and thoughtfully crafting a sensible and sound medical cannabis ordinance, not recreational, that would bring safe access for this healing plant to those adults who now have a state legal right to use it, while promoting increased safety of the general community at large, and protecting the image of the city. The various commissions have done their reviews, and asked the test questions, and provided their input. And for all that time from our city officials, and our fellow, my fellow cannabis industry colleagues, and the patients who gave their time and energy to bring us that information, we applaud and thank you. Regulating cannabis will not bring mayhem or destruction to Oceanside, it will bring and provide for safe products, safe use, and safe access. We urge you to vote yes and support sensible regulation as proposed here tonight by the Ad Hoc Committee. Thank you.
Our next four speakers are Julie Martinez, along with Janet Piedras, followed by Dion Markagroff, Dana Corso, and Jim Jenkins. Julie Martinez and Janet Piedras, are you still here? Okay, we'll move on to our next three, then, so Diane, Dion, Markagroff, Dana Corso, and Jim Jenkins.
My name is Dana Corso, and I'm president of ACTION, which stands for an Alliance of Citizens to Improve Oceanside Neighborhoods, representing 42 neighborhoods, including the mobile home parks. I read through the 125-page summary, including the staff recommendations, et cetera, and the most important part was buried at the very end, in the very last paragraph, which states, and I quote from a memorandum from our chief of police, Frank McCoy, "The residents of our community currently have the ability to have medical marijuana delivered to their house. My recommendation is that our city wait on moving forward with opening any type of dispensary in the city of Oceanside, to give the police department the time to evaluate concerns, issues, and problems other cities that open dispensaries are having. Our department can then come back with meaningful recommendations to ensure that any dispensaries opened in our city will be able to meet the needs of those desiring medical marijuana, and address the overall safety of our community." End of quote. When our police and fire departments say wait, then our city council should say wait before moving forward, period. Our country, our state, and our city is under attack with an opioid and drug epidemic, excuse me. Oceanside has came a long way in terms of crime and aesthetics. It is critical that we have all of our checks and balances in place prior to moving forward for the safety of our citizens and for the greater good of Oceanside. With all that being said, I suspect Mr. Kern and Mr. Lowry will disregard the police and fire recommendations. Why? It's simple, dollar signs and campaign contributions. Seems that's all that you care about. You picked your people for the Ad Hoc Committee. You picked our city treasurer, you even picked our mayor. And most recently, last week, you voted Dennis Martinick out of the Planning Commission, who is a retired professor of business economics and in urban planning with a PhD, and inserted Mr. Lowry's girlfriend, and that's a fact. Please, enough of the good old boys. I can assure you that the majority of the citizens in our city would adhere to the police and fire recommendations, and I would hope and pray that our new mayor, Mr. Weiss, will uphold our former mayor's position and wait to move forward until this subject is vetted and approved by our first responders. Thank you.
Honorable Mayor, city council members, once again, Jim Jenkins, thank you very much, Renita DeLauro. I think the Ad Hoc Committee did a great job in doing all their reviewing. Some things that I have not heard, discussed, or even brought up, that I'm sure is under the concerns of law enforcement and fire, is that there are issues in regarding, since our city, our state, and our nation is concerned about gun control, there's some specific laws that state very clearly, and under this form here, Department of Justice for firearms transactions, it's, it clearly states, I'm gonna go ahead and pull this up and read this part, because it's hard to see that on there, but under one of the lines, it says, "Are you, are you an unlawful user or addict to marijuana or depressant, stimulant, narcotic drug, or any other controlled substance?" And then it says, "Warning: The use or possession of marijuana remains unlawful under federal law, regardless of whether it has been legalized or decriminalized for medicinal or recreational purposes in the state where you reside." So as of 2016, the Ninth Circuit Court of Appeals stated very clearly, if you are a user of marijuana or other controlled substances, you cannot possess a firearm. And so how does law enforcement control that? Does everybody that goes, does everybody that go in, purchase marijuana, register, and then be searched? I mean, so we have issues that have to be looked into. I'm not against medical marijuana, but there's still a lot of things that need to be discovered and determine how do they control that. So that's a question under federal law, and how does the state law prevail? So I have not heard nothing about gun control. So please look into that and take that into consideration before approving. Thank you.
I've been a resident of Oceanside since we moved here in 1980 to Darwin Drive. I'm a cannabis warrior. I've been serving in the, the justice cause for social and civil rights for cannabis people for 27 years. Did my senior thesis at SDSU in political science, studying this subject. I moved to... I moved to Europe and helped open the first hemp store there in 93, and helped medical cannabis there. I opened the first dispensary in San Diego in 97. Today, I'm building hemp houses in Vista. So we are selling tiny houses and all kinds of houses with hemp. And I'm on the board of the Association of Cannabis Professionals. We're putting on this event in San Diego at Balboa Park at Earth Day. And through our participation, we've helped save Earth Day. Earth Day would probably not have happened this year if it wasn't for the cannabis community. And that's the kind of citizens that we are. We're tax-paying, good citizens. And you guys need to, I'm happy that you're finally doing this, but this is 22 years beyond when you should have been doing this. And I'm happy that you're in the 21st century and finally voting on this. And just to let you know, the dispensaries that have been approved in San Diego that are paying taxes are gonna pay the equivalent to the economy in San Diego as the San Diego Convention Center now. So you're doing your citizens a disfavor by not moving forward as quickly as possible with these medical regulations and get with the board and have recreational and freedom. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor and Councilmember. Can you hear me? Okay. Good evening, Mayor and Councilmembers. My name is Julie, and this is Janet, and we are seniors at RBB. I'm a member of the Public Policy Club, and I am concerned about the youth marijuana use. According to the most recent California Healthy Kids Survey, 11% of freshmen, 10% of juniors, and 37% of non-traditional students report using marijuana in the past months. They are also reporting using marijuana most frequently in schools, I mean, frequently than alcohol. That means in schools, in their own communities, in their own homes. Teens are mostly trying to fit in and find a place in their society. According to a research, when teens were asked why they use marijuana, 29% said because they wanted to fit in because their friends used it. In conclusion, adults need to lead by setting the right example. Youth like me need to take responsibility. I ask responsible adults to lead us in the right direction by making decisions and laws that keep us healthy and able to lead the next generation. Please keep in mind that if you allow it, it will also influence other cities and their youth as well. Thank you.
Our next four speakers are Debbie Obergon, followed by Alma Cuevas, Jordan Carter, and Daniela Zarate.
Good evening, Mayor, Councilmembers. My name is Debbie Obergon, and I've lived in Oceanside for 45 years. I find it extremely ironic that you're considering allowing commercial marijuana businesses with no proposal to collect taxes from them, while at the same time you're gathering public input on a proposed sales tax increase because the city doesn't have enough resources for public safety. No other city in the county is permitting marijuana businesses without taxes, and most are continuing to ban them altogether. Both our police chief and our fire chief have serious concerns about this proposal, and Chief McCoy recommends our city wait on moving forward with opening any type of dispensary. Oceanside residents were not given the opportunity to vote for our current mayor, but he was appointed to fill the seat of Mayor Jim Wood, who served over 30 years with the Oceanside Police Department. And he received the vote, 65% of the vote, when he was re-elected in 2016. I believe Mayor Wood would have recognized the dangers and the harms in allowing commercial marijuana businesses to open in our city, and he would have supported the recommendations from our police chief. I sincerely hope you will do the same. Thank you very much.
Good evening, City Councils and Mayor. I am Alma Cuevas.
And I'm Daniela Zarate. We are both from Oceanside High School and from a club called BTR, Be the Resistance. We do not, okay. I do not agree with marijuana, because it can cause a lot of problems, especially unplanned consequences. And I know this because I've seen it happen to someone who was very close to me, and they didn't end up in very well. It devastates me to see them in this poor state.
Teens usually make the decision to use marijuana based on one of four factors: curiosity, friends, self-medication, and social media. I personally have experienced someone in my family who self-medicated themselves, and they did not turn out really well. He would, he would have migraines, so in order to cease the pain, he would take marijuana, and for a while it did cease the pain. You might think, well, isn't it great? It's working out. No, it's not great. He turned out to be addictive, and now he uses it recreationally every day.
This also causes problems in schools. I know a few people who were kicked out of the music department because of using these substances, and they couldn't do what they love to do because of the substances that they used. Thank you for your time.
Do you need help passing those out?
I'm Jordan Carter from Oceanside High School, part of BTR, Be the Resistance. We have collected over 100 postcards from Oceanside. In last city council meeting I spoke at, I smelled a strong scent of marijuana. And having to deal with that more, more when... Having marijuana more commercialized, it will give more popularity, and others will start recommending it to other teens at the school. And... In not mentioning the negative effects of marijuana. And those are the postcards that we have collected. It's over 100, or some of the, some of the postcards.
Yeah, thank you so much. Thank you. Our next four speakers are Bob Nutella, Chris Glasgow, Eric Aliri, and Robert North.
Hello, Council, this is Bob Nutella, Oceanside. I'm a visual person, but they already showed everything that went on. The council voted for medical, right? And most of the decision and the discussion, quite honestly, has been around adult use. Because the medical use, quite honestly, is capsules, sprays, tinctures, you know, subdermal patches. We're not talking about smoking. Quite honestly, adult users are probably 45, 50, 55 and older. So to me, the plan, the economic plan, wanted image, planning was totally in favor of it. The Sheriff and Fire Department, I believe it, I've been in the 50 legal and illegal dispensaries. And they're actually more pot-focused. They're not healthcare-focused. So what drives me to is the formula of everything that everyone wanted, is the Type 9 license is the dispensary with no storefront. So all of a sudden, your image problem goes away, your safety and security goes away, you don't have any loitering anymore. And now we're actually talking about patients, right? So how, the best thing that the people are against this ordinance was, was they won the first day when it was strictly medical. So they won, so rec is out. So how do you measure medical? The state has provided a document for physicians to sign that does not say that they want the patients to do medical marijuana. It's that they're aware of it, right? So medical marijuana should be on the person's physician's jacket. They're taking this medication, they're taking this medication, they're taking cannabis. That is how you measure whether it's an adult user or a medical user. Push the envelope and go gold standard, and have the physician involved in the decision. Thank you.
Mayor, City Councilmembers, my name is Chris Glasgow, and although I am not a resident of Oceanside, I stand in front of you today representing a handful of entrepreneurs and the thousands of patients seeking safe access to medical marijuana. You have a difficult and controversial decision to make. My ask of you is to remember that you are only human. No one is expecting this process to be perfect. We all make mistakes, but the one best thing about mistakes is that it gives everyone a chance to learn. Please pass the medical cannabis ordinance and help all of the other surrounding cities, because I promise they are all watching. Thank you.
I know you've seen that already, but just a reminder. Good evening, Mayor and Councilmembers. My name is Erica Aliri. I'm the Program Manager for the North Coastal Prevention Coalition, and I've lived in Oceanside for nearly 23 years. This postcard the NCPC has been distributing is what regulation looks like in the city of San Diego and what it looks like everywhere where marijuana businesses are allowed. Your proposed sign regulations can't do anything about billboards, signed twirlers, or any type of, other type of advertising that's protected by free speech. It's also worth noting that any regulations you plan to adopt this evening are likely going to be ignored by certain elements of the industry. I asked several times during ad hoc committee meetings why the city would want to adopt more regulations when the regulations to allow deliveries were already not being followed or enforced. I was assured several times by marijuana advocates that the illegal delivery operations would cease come January 1st, when the state took over and enforced regulations. Well, the state finally sent a letter to Weed Maps on March 12th ordering them to stop advertising illegal delivery companies. Their response, the company stated that since it's not licensed by the Bureau, it's not subject to enforcement. The industry is also up in Sacramento lobbying to reduce the tax rate that was approved by the voters, and have drafted a bill that if passed would further reduce resources to enforce regulations. San Diego Police Chief Shelley Zimmerman tried to warn their city council back in September, when she told them, "Currently, there are 11 permitted dispensaries that you as a council allow to operate in our city for the past two and a half years. Our police department has responded to 272 radio calls to these legal dispensaries. These calls have included burglaries, robberies, theft, assault, shootings, just to name a few. In addition, there have been 15 armed and strong-armed robberies from delivery services, including the legal ones." The city of San Diego ignored the recommendations of their chief. If we're already struggling to maintain adequate public safety now, how can you further burden our police and fire departments with commercialized marijuana? Thank you.
Mayor, City Councilmembers, my name is Rob North. Longtime citizen of Oceanside, Army veteran, business owner. And as a business owner, I would never consider opening up a dispensary under current laws, because frankly, it's illegal. But reading what has been proposed so far, I do have some questions. The first one is, how would these licenses be awarded? We're talking two to a maximum of eight. That gives a lot of power and a lot of influence and a lot of money. We don't want to see my tax dollars going to fight the inevitable lawsuits that are gonna come from the people who don't get approved. So the approval process has to be above reproach. There also needs to be much stiffer penalties for legal dispensaries that need to start now. If someone has operated an illegal dispensary, they shouldn't be allowed to have a legal one once they start passing licenses. And finally, the money, the money that comes to fund these operations needs to be looked at all the way back to its source to keep the illegal and illicit money from flowing into these very lucrative businesses. So these are things that I think need to be answered before any law can be passed. Thanks.
Our next four speakers are Eric Larson, Jeffrey Levitt, Laura Shepherd, and Manuel Martinez.
Good evening, members of the council. I'm Eric Larson, Executive Director of the San Diego County Farm Bureau. First, I want to thank you for considering an action that will go further than any other county or any other city in San Diego County on following the will of the people and allowing for commercial cultivation of medical cannabis in greenhouses. A legal crop in California that can help preserve local farming. However, please don't adopt an ordinance that trips over the precautionary principle and creates regulations that hinder a new farming opportunity before it can even get off the ground. Your proposed ordinance on cultivation is highly restrictive, and through the CUP process, the city will be able to guarantee compatibility at all times. But we do have three suggestions we'd like you to consider. First, on the thousand-foot separation recommendation. If you look at your current list of regulated uses, all are retail establishments, and separation probably makes sense. Cultivators will not be open to the public. And like hundreds of greenhouse operations currently in the county, no one will know what's being grown inside. At 1,000 feet, the separation will be unfairly keep some property owners from selecting cultivation as a farming choice because of proximity to other growers. Second, the 10% lot coverage will not provide the scale that will be needed for some of the smaller parcel owners. Also, it's disproportionately restrictive on large farms. And finally, a single permit per legal lot will preclude owners of large parcels from leasing land at no greater impact than will be taking place on adjacent smaller parcels. Thank you very much for your consideration.
Councilmembers and Mayor, thank you very much for your time. My name is Jeff Levitt, I'm from San Diego, not Oceanside, but I am a business owner. I've been a business owner in San Diego most of my life. You know, we're talking about here is medicine. We're not talking about Reefer Madness. We're not talking about some old draconian ideas. We're talking about medicine for people that need it. I have a lot of military friends, a lot of Navy SEALs that are up in this area. I spend a lot of time up in this area. Those people should be given fair access to their medicines. To have to have delivery services bring it to you is not the way it's meant to be. To have two dispensaries, they are open-market businesses. Their prices are not regulated. If you have two dispensaries in the entire city of Oceanside, they're gonna do very, very well, because they're gonna be able to increase pricing, and you're eliminating the competition by having so few. You mentioned that the amount of dispensaries is based on population. If you do the math, the population is higher than 80,000 people in Oceanside. That would take care of two dispensaries for 40,000 people each. Those aren't the numbers, though. They really need, you really need to consider more dispensaries, better access for your citizens and for your residents here in Oceanside. Thank you very much for your time.
Good evening, Councilmembers. My name is Laura Shepherd. I'm a registered nurse and a recent transplant from Oklahoma. I want to discuss with you tonight why it's important that we have safe access to natural medicine for people who actually really need it. We're not talking about teenagers just going around getting stoned. I'm here to advocate for those who cannot be here to advocate for themselves. My patients that I see in the hospital, sick. This is medicine, and everybody has a right to have access to safe medicine and safe places to get their medicine. Like I said, I'm a recent transplant from Oklahoma, and in Oklahoma, everything is illegal there considering marijuana, and it's not a system that works. I can tell you that now. In our high schools, we have very high rates of drug abuse, alcohol abuse. And actually, and I've done some research, in places like Colorado and here in California, legal use actually drops abuse from teenagers. And I just want to give you a couple numbers real quick. 64,000 people died in 2017 related to opioid overdoses and opioid abuse. Zero people died from medicine. Zero people died from medicinal marijuana, and I just want you guys to keep that in the forefront of your mind. And a number, another number is two-hundred-and-forty million dollars is the tax revenue from actually marijuana in Colorado, and they are putting that money towards education and towards homeless shelters. I know we've been discussing that tonight as well. I just want you guys to remember those patients who cannot speak for themselves. Thank you. Have a good evening.
Good afternoon. My name is Manuel Martinez, and I'm representing the RBV Public Policy Club. I'm well aware of the commercial use of marijuana being distributed as pills and liquids or sprays, but I don't think that really stops the abuse or, I guess, local and home abuse of the substance regarding the youth. Regarding just the youth itself and the abuse at home, this could lead to, well, it is known as a gateway drug, and you could still get high off of the pills and the liquid, so it's still, it's a potential threat to the home and local community. And just regarding the Oceanside High School, twenty-eight, twenty-seventeen survey taken by the district shows that there's been an increase of almost three times, going from a four percent use to an eleven percent use from the grades of seventh and to ninth, showing that students have been abusing the drug more as they get into high school. And so just putting up commercial or promoting the use of this substance will, I think, increase abuse within just the high schoolers, but not only that, but within the local community. And it can easily spread to like other cities such as Vista or Crossbad, so I think that's a thing to consider, but that is all I would say. Thank you for your time.
Our next four speakers are Deborah Bridge, Tim Leary, Michelle Keeler, and Michelle
Michelle Costellano Keeler, third-generation flower farmer and Oceanside resident. As a local farmer, I want to comment solely on the cannabis cultivation. Cannabis cultivation is an agricultural operation, and I encourage you to treat it like agriculture. As been stated before, the thousand-dollar set, the thousand-foot setback is a regulated use requirement, and while that might make sense for a dispensary, a liquor store, it doesn't make sense for a cultivation operation where it's not access to the public. You already have twenty-five-foot setbacks requirements for things like greenhouses, and I encourage you to keep it like that. The limit, the limit also, it limits who can cultivate, just to a limited few. And as some of the farmers were speaking earlier, our farm could actually accommodate a thousand-foot setback on all sides of a greenhouse, so in a way I shouldn't even be complaining about that. But for Oceanside, that's not a good way to go about it. It also interrupts the operation in place. If we were to put a twenty-two thousand square foot and had to do thousand-foot setbacks, you'd go right in the middle of our existing operation, which disrupts agriculture as it's being operated. The ten percent coverage, no one seems to be concerned if I cover my flower farm with greenhouses and hoop houses full of flowers, but then all of a sudden this legal crop is getting treated with a ten percent coverage, which doesn't make sense. And similarly, the one, the one permit per legal lot, Southmore Hills is full of two-and-a-half acre estate homes, and that means a two-and-a-half acre estate person could get one permit, but then a hundred-acre lot, such as ourselves, would still only get one. That doesn't make sense, and it doesn't allow for leasing and clustering those operations. We can grow flowers, tomatoes, wine grapes, hops, there's all these crops out there that no one wants to put restrictions on, but then this legal crop is being treated as a different agricultural operation. I encourage you to listen to your farm bureau, listen to your local farmers who are struggling, and treat this as agriculture and give us the opportunity to grow it.
My name's Tim Leary. I'm a twenty-year Oceanside resident and a teacher at Richmond Vista High School. To be against the ordinance is not to be against medical marijuana, it's to be against the ordinance. You passed an ordinance a couple years ago that allowed delivery, and there are at least a dozen illegal delivery services taking part. It's not being stopped. This allows, this ordinance would allow for two dispensaries. It will not be two. It will be more. The speakers before me have already proven that. How many speakers have come up here and talked about the economic opportunity that marijuana presents? It's not about medical marijuana. It's about the ordinance, and it's about having too many dispensaries. It will not be two. And it's my understanding that part of the idea for this ordinance is to avoid an initiative that would allow for more. And the fear of that initiative being on the ballot in twenty-sixteen, or excuse me, twenty-eighteen and passing, and let's get something done that stops that. Don't approve this ordinance out of fear of that initiative. Do what's right. Know that it's not going to be two. You know it's not. You can see all the restrictions that you put in it and the fears that you have of it, so don't pass it. And if the initiative passes, the initiative passes, and then we go about getting rid of that. It's the democratic way.
Good evening, Mayor, Deputy Lowry, and Council members. My name is Deborah Bridge, and while I don't live in Oceanside, I am a supporter. I have been on workers' comp since two thousand fourteen, and within the last year I've been seeing a pain management doctor. With, every time I visit, which can be anywhere from one month to two months in time, I'm asked if I want a refill. I refuse the refills as I'd rather have an alternative. An alternative was brought to my attention about six months ago. That alternative is medical marijuana. I have used edibles, salves, and lotions. Some of these are instant relief and don't cause the fogginess and other side effects as Percocet. You have heard, or have will hear tonight, that medical marijuana is bad and shouldn't be around children. We are not, and I repeat, not talking about recreational. We are talking about medical marijuana that is used responsibly. Please vote yes and help not only me, but others that are in pain. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor Weiss and Council members. My name is Michelle Gomez. I am an Oceanside resident. I'm also a commissioner on the Oceanside Housing Commission, but I speak on behalf of myself tonight. I have firsthand experience with patients that have chronic illnesses and life-threatening illnesses and have seen firsthand the benefits of medical cannabis. I've also been working with our veteran population for years, and I know firsthand also how it benefits our veteran population. As an advocate for veterans, I'm asking you please to show compassion this evening and vote in favor of this initiative. Thank you.
Our next four speakers are Don Gomez, Lauren McCormick, Kelly McCormick, and Sheri
Good evening, Mayor Weiss and Council members. My name is Don Gomez. I'm a twelve-year resident of Oceanside. I'm a veteran of the United States Marine Corps and a sufferer of PTSD whose quality of life has been significantly improved through the use of cannabis. I urge you to vote in favor of sensible local regulation where it benefits our veterans and those people who are suffering other medical conditions who can benefit from the use of cannabis. Also, as a recently-appointed member of the city's Manufactured Homes Fair Practices Commission, I speak on behalf of those residents whose lives are also improved through the use of cannabis. And to the young people here tonight who would speak against sensible regulation of cannabis, I just want to say that you are all being used by adults as political pawns, and I want you to realize what harm you may be creating for medical patients as you are not currently aware of what's being faced by medical patients. And I hope that you would really look around at all the people tonight who come from all these various walks of life and reconsider your opinion for all of our future.
Hi, my name is Lauren McCormick, and I'm a high schooler, here to give you the actual truth about marijuana because the notion that it's actually safe to smoke is a fallacy. Truthfully, the health benefits of marijuana are very few compared to the health problems caused by pot, and I do want to say, I was a sufferer of PTSD, and when I smoked pot, it gave me mania. It doesn't work for everyone. You can't use that as an excuse, and yes, it was legal. We've heard over and over that cigarettes aren't safe, that big tobacco targeted the mentally ill, the armed forces, the teenagers. Getting people hooked was part of their business plan. Marijuana is doing the exact same thing. Just because it was new back then and now it's new now, we don't know anything. We don't know enough, but we do know a lot of the problems that it's causing. But I'm here to tell you what it does to the students because I see the problems that marijuana causes every single day. I see the hazards, people smoking in bathrooms during lunch, during class, it's not a pretty sight. There are hundreds of eighteen-year-olds and even more twenty-one-year-olds who will buy legal pot from dispensaries and then sell it to minors for an increased price. It's incredibly easy for teenagers to get marijuana, and I encourage you to listen to your police chief when they tell you that it's not safe to have dispensaries in your city. People start smoking at twelve, and I've seen people green out from overdoses. It is possible not to die, but to get ridiculously sick. I've had to drive a friend to the hospital because they had paranoia, unconsciousness, a racing heartbeat, and I don't want anyone to have to go through that. If you allow dispensaries in your city, the number of teenagers smoking will increase. You will have more hospital visits, and the police will have to increase their need for more money for public safety because this is a huge mistake. Please protect your city, and please protect your children. Thank you.
Real quick, before we start, just a quick reminder to the public. Thank you guys so much for, you know, being kinder in this entire conversation. I just want to quickly remind you, could we refrain from clapping before-after comments just to keep things expedited? And thank you so much for being respectful, everyone. We'll continue. Thank you so much.
Before you start, I have been asked to take a short break. We will reconvene in seven minutes.